So, good evening. Good evening. I want to welcome you to the Fab Committee meeting. Thanks to some of my colleagues from our last board meeting, they asked at this, the final Fab meeting for fiscal year 2017-2018 to be held in open forum. So therefore, we are out here today and it's being recorded. So whenever you do any, colleagues, whenever you speak, please speak into your microphones because it's all, it's being recorded. And y'all are so far away, I'm just not used to y'all being so far away. But, um, but, uh, you know, although it's just as formal, we still want to conduct ourselves, it's just, this is just a committee meeting. So do all of the committee members have the minutes from our May 15th, 2018 meeting? So we wouldn't do that, we can hurry up and review those and approve them. So I guess for, since this is an open, open forum, I might want to have people introduce themselves. So for the ruckus, everybody knows who is present at this meeting. So I would start to my right with the Vice Chair of the Fab Committee. So you can introduce yourselves, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sonya Williams, School Board Member representing District 9, where we rock. And I am the Co-Chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. And I'm present.
Thank you.
Hello, Sigourney Banks, Fab Committee Member.
Myself, Carolyn Boston, Chair of the Fab Committee.
Lynn Lucci, Board Counsel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Michelle Winston, Director of Internal Audit.
Christian Rose, Chief of External Affairs.
Wesley Watts, Chief Operating Officer.
John Pfister, Chief Financial Officer.
Ayesha Berkeley, Board Office.
Mr. Burrows, you want to introduce yourself?
Edward Burrows, School Board.
Thank you. For the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes for the meeting, um, May 15th.
Second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're doing, we're at Discussion Items, which is 2.1, Review and Discuss Impact of the County Council Approved Budget. And since this is the first time that we are being presented this, I will open it up first for Mr. Pfister to present the, um, the, you know, the budget, the, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. We prepared a short little presentation and just could like to walk you through it. And then if there's any questions at the end, we can certainly entertain those at that point. So on page one, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what the budget process is. As you know, this, it's almost a, you know, a year-long process, but basically, we get started in September and we finish by June 30th. By law, we have to finish by June 30th. So the CEO prepares his budget, but then we get in, the work of this committee would begin in January and February with board hearings, some of the Fab Committee updates that we would provide you, but the work sessions and the public hearings. You, as a board, approved a budget on February 22nd, and by law, it has to be to the county executive by March 1st of every year. The county executive then has to turn around very quickly and make his proposal to the County Council by March 15th. During the months of March to May, there's, you know, the administration is over with the county, working through the budget, answering questions, is very similar to how we answer questions with you, both in this session and setting, and also in public session. And that all occurs with the county having to approve its budget by May 30th per its county charter. The Board of, the Board of Education then gets that budget back, and if necessary, it does go through a reconciliation process. And then by law, we have to have an approved budget up to MSD within 30 days of the county approval or June 30th, whichever is earlier. Ah, thanks, David. And then, of course, our budget becomes July 1st. So we have to have a balanced budget in effect and loaded by July 1st.
John, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Um, I just have a question about this, the schedule, just want to have some clarity. You mentioned that we, that the process starts in September and, but there are things that occur between September and January.
Yes, that, that would be the CEO working with administration to prepare his budget request that is delivered to you in December.
Correct.
I've eliminated that from the slide because we're focused on sort of the board work here.
Right, but I think it's important that we share
Okay.
The board's input in that process.
Yes.
Um, looking at our, our budget, our Fab Committee work plan, we, we ask the board members and committees to submit their priorities. So when you go into this process, you're not working without our input, you're actually working with input from the board. So in September, we started to ask board members and committees to submit their priorities so that you know what we're expecting to see in the board.
Correct.
And I believe we gave that to you in November.
Yes, ma'am.
So that as you were working through the process, you're putting together a budget that has the input of the board and our priorities in it.
Right, and if, and if you'd like, I can let you know what, remind you of what those five priorities were.
Can you, can you remind us of this?
Yes, absolutely. So the five priorities that came out of the Fab Committee meeting and the work was to address facilities and building services, maintenance, basically, address the student-based budgeting, because as our enrollment increases, we need to increase the funding for that, English language learner supports, because of that population, we need to address, compensation is always the number one priority, and then pre-kindergarten expansion. So those were the five priorities that came out of the Fab Committee, and all five of those were in the CEO's proposed budget. There was also some talk about, like, I don't want to say lesser priorities, but we also included community schools, supports for literacy and numeracy, career and technology education, and then, of course, student safety.
So during, during that time between September and January, you're working with some input from the board to craft a budget that you then present to us.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're just looking at those details starting in, in January. We, we're confirming that our priorities ha, are a part?
Yes.
And then we're looking at the details, or even the budget dollars that we, um, that you all have put in the budget.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So what the board did request was a $2.047 billion budget, that's an increase of $72 million, or 3.7% above the 18 approved budget. And again, just to reiterate, you did that on February 22nd. So where that came from is we had an increase of $100 million from federal sources, I'm sorry, not an increase, total, I'm sorry, I'm used to showing the slide as increases, but this is our total revenue to show where it came from. So we have federal resources of 100 million, state 1.142 billion, board sources of 13 million. We did go back into fund balance once again, and are using $28 million of our own money to continue the operations as we see fit. And then the county changed total funding with 763 million to, again, as a balanced budget. So the revenue source is there, total the expenditures in the requested budget. And again, just to reiterate, it's, it's 72.3 million, or 3.7%. These next two slides are identical, because the county executive and then formerly county executive, I mean, sorry, county executive then county council, approved it in the exact format as you approved and sent over there for consideration. So there was no change in either the revenue, and we'll soon see here in our state categories as far as what the county council approved. And as you know, county council is the ultimate authority in, in funding what our budget is. So the county executive has a request, but it goes to county council for final funding. And that's what you'll see here. I know it's a little bit small, but as you can see, when the Board of Education sent their budget over on March 1st, those are the categorical amounts. The county council approved that on May 24th, and then that will become the Board of Education, since there's no reconciliation, that will become the Board of Education approved budget on June 30th. Well, as of June 30th, ready to take effect on July 1. And again, just to reiterate of what that dollar amount is, 2.047. And then, as I mentioned earlier in the beginning, under 5101 and 5102 of the education article, we have to submit a balanced budget to MSD no later than June 30th. And with that, we can open it up for discussion.
Any questions?
Go ahead. So I will just kind of be clear and put this kind of, put the point of clarity on this, because when the county executive approved a budget exactly as we requested, that was relatively rare and unusual. And when the county council approved our budget exactly as we asked for, I believe that was unprecedented in terms of anybody's memory that, that we've talked to. And first, let me say, I think that was a result of great work done by you and by the leadership team and by the board to kind of collaborate with the county executive's office and county council's office to ask big, I mean, a 3.7% increase, 72 million dollars more than we got the year before is substantial. And, and to have done that, I think, is unprecedented. And so again, for clarity, it means there's no reconciliation. The board approved this budget and the county council approved it. And so unlike any time in human history of Prince George's County, right, there's no budget reconciliation that is required by the board.
I would, I would agree with that, and I think it's a testament to some of the relationship building that my predecessor, Mr. Brown, had started with the county, and what I hope to have continued. And when, again, working with the board through the Fab Committee, realizing what we could, you know, honestly afford and moving forward with a budget that was both fundable and, and equitable. And I think what you're seeing is a result of those, that hard work, as you mentioned.
Just for clarity, based on what the Chair just said, are you saying that there will not be a vote to reconcile the budget?
There does not need to be, because you've already approved this budget as is, and there's no changes. What you normally are approving at this time would be a reconciliation document to bring the county council's budget in line with what you approved back in February. So there would be no need to do that at this point.
So back in February, and all the way up leading to this moment, I've expressed, some of my other colleagues have expressed amendments that we wanted to make to this budget. And based on, I guess, the decision of the Chair, am I hearing that we will not have that opportunity to make amendments to the budget?
There, there's no need to, because it would, as this board approved this budget in February, the council and, both the executive and the council have approved it as is. So therefore, it would just become the approved budget as of July 1.
Well, if I can answer that question too, Mr. Burrows, I believe that this committee submitted the budget that was sent to the county, exec and the county council, was presented to the whole board, and that was the opportunity to make any changes to that budget. We had the discussions, and this budget was approved by the board as a whole in a public setting. That's why that budget went forward to the county count, the county exec and the county council, and that's what they approved.
No, I'm very familiar with the process. I've voted on the budget for the, for the past 10 years. And a part of that process is that normally the budget comes back to this board this month, and we're able to make amendments to the base budget.
Based on if we did not get what we, what we asked for. This is something that is present, we've both been on the board, and you was on the board, I'm sure, a few years before I got on the board, and I don't think at, any time since I've known, that we had the county council and the county exec approve a budget that we sent. So you can't say that this, this process has ever happened before, because it has not.
I would just say, on behalf of the commitments that we've made as a board pretty openly, I remember when we voted back in February on the, the amendment to the budget to pay, to add more money toward compensation, we said that we would work together between now and reconciliation in order to make amendments. Even at the last meeting, I talked about Head Start not covering three-year-olds, and I wanted to make an amendment to cover three-year-olds. And so throughout this entire process, we've been talking about reconciliation, gearing up for reconciliation, because members had common sense, you know, amendments to offer. And so I guess to Mr., I don't know who I should direct this to, even though the county exec and the county council gave us the exact amount that we requested, I'm sure that we could still vote to amend our budget.
If I'm not mistaken, and I can ask for our legal department to, and, and the staff to weigh in on this, I believe the only thing that we could do, we cannot change the dollar, the bottom amount, I believe. We can only, if line items, is that correct? So can you explain that process when the budget has already been approved?
Excuse me, just, just for the record, I wanted to be known that Kate Alexander Wallace has been joining us since, for 24.
Okay.
He's on Zoom. Mr. Wallace? Might be a little bit of a delay, but I just-
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just had to do that for the record, so that everyone will know that you're joining us, okay?
Thank you. So I don't know which one of our, John, can you explain that process when a budget has been approved as is, and what do we have, what can we do as a-
Let me just, let me just step back a little bit to, as when it's over there with the county. So when the county executive approves his budget, in total, the entire county budget, the one thing that the county council cannot do is alter that bottom line without amendments from the county executive. But they could take money from this, this particular department and give it to this particular department, but then, and the same thing they have to do, remain to the bottom line. We have to do the same thing, we have to remain to the bottom line. And since these categories are exactly approved by the county council as they were submitted by the board, I don't see the need for reconciliation, but we do have to keep to the bottom line of the, the amount that was approved by them.
So in order to ask for clarity, so as long as we stay to, stay to this $2 billion figure here, we're obligated to stay at this figure, and we can't go above it.
That is correct, sir.
But if we wanted to shift categories under it, we have that ability.
In, in the past, when we've done the reconciliation, that's exactly what had to be done. In this case, that doesn't have to be done, because the board has already approved the budget as is.
But it could be done.
It could be done, yes.
And I think-
Okay, Mr. Burrows, I got the committee members that, that have weighed in, and you can save your last, whatever your comment, until after they speak, and then you can speak.
Let me clarify, let me clarify that, because I actually don't think that it can be done, because we voted on this budget as a board, and it was approved as is. Now, yes, historically, every single year that everybody remembers, we always got a second bite at the apple. Now, unfortunately, we always got a second bite at the apple, because our request was cut. And so we've never before been given anything we've asked for, we've always had to make cuts to our budget. But now, we don't have to make cuts, and we voted on this budget. And it seems to me, the only way to revisit this budget is for someone on the prevailing side to vote for a reconsideration of our vote. And even if that were to happen, they, we would need to stay, and number one, I don't even know if we can do that, I would have to look into that. But that's the only way that you can re, because now, this is the budget, it's been approved, it's been voted on, there were many amendments that were made on many occasions on that night. Those amendments failed. They failed. And so now, we voted on a budget that was approved by the, by, by a vast majority of the board, legally binding, you can't revisit that vote unless you go through the right, improper channels of revisiting a, a vote that's already been approved by the board. And even then, there would be some legal restrictions to what we can do inside of this budget.
As a process, as the process that we took to get here, it started in September, October. For us to try to revisit and go through this and move line items, we will be revisiting that whole process again and changing the whole budget. What I would like to recommend, we are three months away from starting the process for the next fiscal year. We're going to be asking board members and committees to submit their priorities. That is the opportunity for you to put it in the beginning of the process, so that we understand what it is that we're working with, what is the goal that we're trying to reach. For us to, I remember when I first got on the board, and I thought it was very odd that the board was presented with a budget that had no input from the board. That's like me having someone plan a party, and I tell them, just go plan a party. And I don't tell them it's for a boy, and I don't tell them I want it to be a specific theme, and they come to me and they want it to be princess and pink. And then I say, no, that's not what I want, try again. They come back and it's cupcakes and balloons, and I say, no, that's not what I want. So instead of doing it that way, we present our priorities in the beginning, so that they're working with, in, with our goals in mind. So as we move into this process three, three months from now, I think that we should be very clear on what it is that our priorities are, and we presented compensation as a part of that priority. And, and there has been, there is some compensation adjustments in that, in the budget for this year.
Yes, it is. And if I could just make a, you know, a comment, as Ms. Williams said, we're 10 months into this process, and in normal years past, as we've talked about, we, we know we were going to be a reconciliation, we were gonna, know we were gonna have to make decisions on what needed to be, that doesn't happen to happen here. So to, you know, at the, at the 11th hour, to go ahead and try to do something that's, you know, unnecessary, you know, I think is disingenuous to the whole process.
The other thing that's worth noting about the authority of the, both the administration and the board, is that both have some authority to move inside of a budget that has already been approved. We can always and have, on a pretty regular basis, gone back to the county council during the year and said, these categories don't work for us, we want to move from this category to that category. I'm, I could be wrong, but I don't think that's ever been denied, at least in recent memory. We've also done things when, for example, we negotiate with our bargaining units, and we agree to, in a bargaining, to more than what's in that, in that reserve, then we come back as a board, we approve that, and the administration finds flexibility in a budget, and we do the things we have to do. So there's, you know, it doesn't completely disempower us by any stretch of the imagination, as either an administration or a board, to make decisions as we implement this budget throughout the 2018-19 school year. Would you agree to that statement?
That, that's 100% correct, Dr. Ubanks. You see, as a board, every month, our transfer report. And what that is, is that's within object level, but staying within the state category. If for some reason, we do some kind of a projections, or in this past year, we received the TSL grant of an increase of $10 million to our budget, those things require your approval and county council approval to either increase our bottom line appropriation or to change amounts per state category. And you see those once, maybe twice a year. So your statements are absolutely, absolutely correct, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace, do you have a question, or?
I know, I do not have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Burrows?
You mentioned disingenuous. I think it's disingenuous to tell the public and members of this board for months that we will have the opportunity to reconcile and make amendments to our budget, and then move the board meeting to after the primary, and then not allow us to do it at all. I think that's very disingenuous. And so clearly, this was already orchestrated and worked out before this meeting today. And so, just want to state my concern about this on, on the record. I think if this board is on, serious about regaining public trust and sentiment and working to reestablish trust with our workforce, this is not the way to do it. I've done my best, since Mr. Maxwell announced his transition, to be less, you know, out there. I haven't run, you know, written many letters or, or anything, because I had hoped that on some of these things, we could work better together on. Clearly, that's not the case. I'm very disappointed that we will not have the opportunity to offer amendments that would make the world of difference. Those three-year-olds who are not going to be able to attend our schools because we're not covering them deserve to be in school, and because we won't be able to make that amendment, they won't be. I'm happy that we got $72 million more, but I think if we were sincere and serious about working together, a, a portion of that could go to employee compensation enhancements. But it's, it seems like, well, it seems like, you know, several board members have already worked things out behind closed doors with the administration, and it's that type of behavior is the reason why this place has no credibility to begin with, and why we're in the position that we're in. And so I will make sure that everyone in the county knows what happened at this meeting today, and they will continue to know all the things that are happening in the school system as best as I can tell it to them.
Well, Mr. Burrows, I do take offense to some of your comments. First of all, there, I don't think anyone in this committee has made any indication that they're not willing to work with our, with our, with our employees or doing the compensation process. That has not been stated here. What we stated here, what has been said, was that this budget, it doesn't need to be reconciled, because it was already passed as it was. Now, I, I believe this whole board, I believe that every member of this board is willing to sit down and work to make sure that all our employees are properly compensated. So for you to sit up here at this meeting and in the public and say that this is some type of ploy or plan, I really take offense to, because that is not what is happening here. We are talking about, and we have been talking about since this meeting is open, was the process by which this budget, and I'm, I'm grateful for one, that, for, for once, that our budget was actually, everything that we asked for was actually done. This process, like Ms. Williams has said, started way back in September, and you had plenty of opportunity. If you were so concerned about three-year-olds, and you were so concerned about more money being in the budget for compensation, you should have done that at that time. You had plenty of opportunities, we had public hearings, we sit, it was plenty of opportunities for you to wage a, a, a really good argument with your, with the rest of your colleagues to be able to do that. You failed to do that. So now you want to blame this committee or, or, or the, or the rest of the board members, and that's not fair.
So I Googled reconciliation. It means to settle a difference. We asked for X amount of dollars, $2 million. We received $2 million. There isn't a difference to reconcile, that's the first point. Second point is, in our budget, we have approved compensation for employees. Do we have that number, Mr. Pfister, that you can share? That is an increase in the, the compensation to our employees. So there is some. It may not be the amount that, that is being asked for or requested as an amendment, but what is that amount that we asked for, and that was approved by the county council and county exec?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I'm going to say it's in the neighborhood of $29 million of the, yeah, 29 million, 29.5 million dollars.
29.5 million dollars is an increase in the compensation that we're paying employees.
Yes, ma'am.
All of our employees.
Yes.
So as we begin this process- So as we begin this process next time, we know 29 million is what percent, or can you give me a, a range in which it represents an increase? Do you know?
I don't, it's about that, but it varies by, by union. So, and I know we got into a little bit of a disagreement last year when we were putting out those public numbers. So I don't want to say 29 million equals this, because I don't want to get in that same boat. But it, it did adequately pay for all the, you know, the settled agreements that we have today.
Right. And you bring up a good point, because before we, we shared those numbers publicly, we got dinged, and we stopped sharing those numbers publicly.
That is correct.
So, but there is an approved amount of an increase in compensation for our employees. Now, we know 29 million, let's say it's about 2%. So if, if we're talking about doubling it, because that's what was brought up, so we're talking about $60 million for a 4% increase to all of our employees. And this year, our increase was $72 million. That $72 million includes community schools, it includes some of our maintenance, improving to our, our maintenance budget. It includes pre-K, it includes a number of things that the $72 million covers. So 4% being $60 million, that gives, that would leave us $12 million to do those other things. So that is why it's so important to follow the process and get the information in as we develop this, because otherwise, we're asking for money that it, it would be difficult to pull from other things, or we may not get it. So I, I think it's important that as we move into this next year and looking at the 2021 budget, because this is 2020, right?
This is 19.
This is 19.
19, okay, I'm sorry. You know, my days are running together. So it's important for us to understand what it is that we're looking for, what it means in numbers and not percent, because that's so important to understand, and what we think we are going to get, especially with this new administration that's coming in. So I would, I would love to work with you, Mr. Burrows, and, and let's talk about how we can get this, be a part of the budget discussion in September through December as we're crafting this budget, so that it, we can strive for a larger amount. Because I agree, I think that because we had those economic challenges back in 2007, '08, '09, and '10, everyone lost, lost steps. And I think they, that all of our staff deserves to be where they should be, but we have to be strategic in how we do that, thoughtful in the process, and, and move this along as a group. So I'm, I'm more than definitely willing to help and support and, and make it a part of the process.
Couple of things, I, thank you, Ms. Williams, for the definition of reconciliation. I would just simply add to that, because I have to, that when you take the political grandstanding away and talk about how things are supposed to be done, reconciliation, in this circumstance, is, is supposed to exclusively mean, and it has in this county throughout its history, that county government gives us less than we asked for, and we must cut our budget. Reconciliation doesn't mean you get another shot to redo the budget process. It means you gotta cut some stuff in order to balance your budget. Now, we've allowed, because of the politics of the way we work around here, people to take another bite at the apple and to add things here and to cut things here, but that's not even the way reconciliation is supposed to work. Reconciliation, post-work said, that said, "You asked me for $100. I asked for $100, you gave me $90. I need to cut $10." It's not the time after 11 months to say, "It, oh, by the way, well, I'm here again. Let me move this $3 here and put this $2 here and do this process all over again at the last minute after 11 months of hard work." That's not the way reconciliating, this reconciliation is supposed to work. We've allowed it to work. I'll take responsibility for that. Maybe I should have popped back harder not to allow that reality to happen. The other part, and when I, when I talked about the, the sincerity of saying that, you know, approving the budget isn't the end-all, be-all of how you make things done and how you get work done. Yesterday, at the request of PGCA, Ms. Boston and I sat with a group of members from PGCA to talk about a, a number of, of crucial issues. One of them, about how we can get serious about addressing the long-term issue of how we get right with compensation for our members. I believe in it. Every other member of this board believes in it. Edward Burrows, despite his commentary, is not the only person who believes in it. But there's a way to do it right. I think our, 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 our union colleagues know about it. We talked about how we organize data, how we think about long-term, how we really look at comparisons, how we build a plan, how we make tough decisions. Okay, fine, if we're gonna, you know, we, there are, there are three ways to, to, that I know of, to improve compensation. You reduce positions, you cut programs, or you increase revenue. If there's another magic bullet out there, I'd love to hear it, and we're gonna get in that conversation about it. And I'm willing to talk about all three of those. But that is a serious and protracted and long conversation that management and the board needs to make a commitment to, that I believe our, our colleagues and all of our bargaining units are ready to make that commitment to as well. So let's get it done. Let's do it the right way. Let's get at the table and start talking and planning the right way.
I guess where our struggle is, if we all agree, then why is there no movement this budget? I mean, if every member of this group, board agrees that we need to work toward this issue, if you call an up or down vote, it should pass to pay our employees more. And so I'm not sure that if we're all in agreement, and at what level we're in agreement. I'm happy that board leadership met with PGCA, but if nothing happens to this budget, I mean, board leadership will certainly be different very soon. And so whatever deals you make, you won't be here to uphold. And so I, I'm, I'm very disappointed that we are in this position. I don't think I'm, clearly, I was placed on the impression, and the public was placed on the impression, that we would have a vote on reconciliation. So it shouldn't come as a shock to you that I'm shocked in this moment, because that's all that we've been talking about leading up to this meeting. I even mentioned it at the last meeting, that we would have a vote on reconciliation. And no one told me that that would not be the case, even though the system had the figures from the, the county council. But like I said, I mean, I, I really have not much else to say, other than I hope that the community organizes and rises up to reclaim our schools and reclaim the Board of Education.
Okay, so you can do the, save the politics for when you get out there.
Oh, I'm not up for election, you are.
But right now, because movement to me is that you put $29 million increase in for negotiations, that's movement. Every time we add money, every year that we add money to negotiations, that's movement. Whether it's as fast of a movement as you want, it's still movement. But we agree.
Cost of living is movement.
Excuse me, Mr. Burrows.
That goes up every year.
Excuse, Mr. Burrows.
Well, you cut me off.
It adds up. It, it, I, it adds up. It adds up. It adds up every year.
Okay, then we just cut each other off.
So we have not, we have not, we, we have not closed the door on anything yet. I think the chair just said that. So, you know, for you to make these statements, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, because you, you know, you do you. But, um, but we're gonna move on, um, so.
Ms. Boston, if I could add one point of clarification to Ms. Williams' point, and then you just reiterated. I'd like to clarify the amount that was in negotiations. It's $39 million. 39 million, I'm sorry. So it's $39 million is what's in the FY19 approved budget for compensation increases for all employee groups.
That we've already negotiated.
That we've already negotiated.
So there's no new money.
There's no new money.
That, that is new money.
It is new money.
You and I have battled, you and I have gone back for new money. There's no new money, Mr. Burrows.
Exactly. You heard him.
It is, it is an increase.
We have to be clear.
It is an increase in, from last year to this year.
39 million dollars.
Obviously, we're talking about new money over what was negotiated.
So we, we're not able, and, and the attorneys can step in, we cannot talk about other, outside of the negotiation. We have agreed to have a certain amount in the negotiation. $39 million covers what has been agreed to by both parties through negotiation. Yeah. And so we're saying we are increasing the employee compensation by $39 million. So if that is, let's say approximately 2% across the board, we're just saying approximately, to get to the 40, the 4%, you're talking about almost $80 million. So we have to figure out, how are we gonna come up with 80 million? Yes, yes. If 39 million.
4% is not 80 million dollars.
For in the entire staff, for all of our staff through the negotiation. Is that correct? 39 million is what we have approved.
I, I didn't bring the specific layouts, but, you know, what I, what I wanted to do was to clarify the number for the record. That is not 29 million, it's $39 million. Of that $72 million you're seeing on that screen right there, 39 million of that.
Over 50%.
Went over 18, went to compensation and negotiated and settled agreements in the FY19 budget.
So thank you, thank you. So we, we need to move on. So we're gonna move on to 2.02, review of third quarter internal audit report. Ms. Winston?
The internal audit, the internal audit policy calls for the internal auditor to provide quarterly reporting to the Board of Education of its activities for each quarter. For the last quarterly report that was issued was the March 31st report. This, this report covered the period January 1st, 2018, through March 31st, 2018. It represents all of the completed activities for internal audit and all of the issued There were 14 schools audited during this quarter, the most, and these were student activity fund audits. The most significant audits were the Kettering Middle School audit, which it was done for the period ended December 31st, 2017, which resulted in 13 findings reported, and nine of those were repeated findings. Benjamin Tasker Middle School, this audit was conducted for the period ended, ending December 31st, 2017, also resulted in 13 findings reported and five repeated findings from the prior audit. Hotline whistleblower and special investigations for the quarter ended March 31st, 2018, there were 106 total hotline reports received. Of those, 71 have been investigated and closed, 30 remain under investigation, and five are pending additional information or action. Friendly High School investigation. This was an investigation that was predicated upon a request from the acting principal into the Spirit Gear fundraisers and other unauthorized purchases that were alleged to have been made by Friendly High School athletic staff. Our key determinations were that a coach conducted this unauthorized fundraiser outside of the school's controls, and that some of the proceeds had been used to purchase video services. None of the proceeds were remitted, resulting in the need for the school to provide resources to pay the $1,720 invoice for fundraising that had been sent to collection in the school's name. It was further determined that a majority of the team's financial activities had actually not been properly approved, and in fact, had been routed through an anonymous donor to the tune of at least $60,625. So the invoices had been sent to that donor, and he paid those directly. And reportedly, this had been done in order to override the Title IX requirements that required that if the school had received those donations, it would have had to been shared with all sports. The principal had provided an action plan that was responsive to the recommendation, and the matter was also referred to ELRO for determination of disciplinary action for the coach. Charles Herbert Flowers High School cheerleading investigation. An anonymous package was received in the mail from parents of the Charles Herbert Flowers school novice cheerleaders. And the novice cheerleaders are just students who hadn't yet advanced to being junior or varsity level, level cheerleaders. And it contained a complaint relative to misappropriation of funds. The key determination is that all funds have been collected for the Charles Flowers novice cheerleaders, were, and they've been accounted for within student activity funds. However, it was noted that the, the parents were due refunds for the funds collected. The principal did provide an action plan, and those parents have been provided those The human resources staff salary increases, this was the result of five separate hotline complaints from anonymous callers alleging that human resources employees had been given undue salary increases. All of the allegations were substantiated in that there were employees that had received increases for lateral moves, some that had been promoted and been given excessive increases, and personnel actions that in fact had, had occurred outside of union negotiations. Actions taken, the, the chief human resources officer and the ELRO provided a management response regarding the actions taken regarding, in regard to the undue salary increases for the affected employees. Kenmore Middle School Special Education Investigation. Internal audit received an anonymous hotline complaint relative to the special education, a special education employee had performed duties at the school, also concerning the accuracy of timekeeping and supplemental payments that had been received. The key determinations were that it was substantiated, that this Fed employee with authorization had actually taken 13.5 days off as unofficial comp days without using the appropriate leave. The Fed chair was not entitled to these days in accordance with board, board procedures. Actions taken, the principal did provide an action plan response, and the matter was referred to ELRO for determination of any disciplinary action and, as well as the amount of any restitution due. Greenbelt Middle School Substitute Cover Pay. This was an investigation into the use of PGCA substitute cover pay at Greenbelt Middle School for the period July 1, 2016, through November 30 of 2017. This was predicated upon a request from Payroll Services, who was following up on a concern expressed by the Office of Legislative Audit. Key determinations, it was substantiated that there were over 95% of 40 entries, entries posted for PGCA substitute cover, eh, cover pay that were either unsupported or potentially misstated at Greenbelt Middle School. It was noted that there were ineffective controls and record-keeping related to PGCA substitute cover pay that resulted in overpayment of 236 hours valued at $4,320 for the tested employees. Actions taken, the principal did provide an action plan response. The matter was referred to ELRO for determination of restitution for the affected employees. Samuel Chase Elementary School Misuse of Funds. This was an investigation also predicated upon a hotline. This was an investigation also predicated upon a hotline report of allegations that of potential embezzlement of funds by the school's principal. These, this was not substantiated. There seems to have been like a series of errors or miscommunications where there was the appearance that, in fact, the principal might have misused some funds, but in fact, all of the funds were accounted for and used as intended. Actions Taken. A action plan response was provided. Avalon Elementary School Field Trip and Other Activities. This was an investigation that was conducted pursuant to a complaint from a parent of a student at Avalon Elementary School. And this parent alleged that collections from the sixth grade field trip and as well as some candy sales had not been accounted for. It was substantiated that a staff member had allowed some students to participate on a field trip to Lorraine Caverns, although the oh, didn't, I'm sorry, that a staff member did not allow some students to go on a field trip to Lorraine Caverns, although those students had, in fact, paid. The four students were not allowed to attend the field trip because they had not paid by the required deadline. It was not substantiated that a staff member sold candy to students and that those funds were not appropriately accounted for. We were able to determine that all of those proceeds had, in fact, been deposited into the school's bank account. Actions Taken. The principal did provide a responsive action plan. Action Plan Compliance in Regards to All of the Audit Reports That Have Been Issued. There are no outstanding action plans. All due have been received. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Winston. Colleagues, do you have any questions from Ms. Winston's report? I would like to say I'm glad to see that all of the action plans, you've received them.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time we've seen this, so I'm glad, thank you.
I just wanted to get some insight on, on what, what seems to be, I won't say a trend, but usually when you uncover something, part of the reason is because there is something missing in the process. Some paperwork, someone did not follow the procedure. Do you typically, or is there a procedure, an administrative procedure that goes back to check to see a random sampling of some of the same instances to see if there has been an improvement? What happens after you uncover that a process hasn't been done to confirm that now the process and procedures are being done?
So, for, for every audit, we always look to see where were they at the last audit? What were the corrective actions that were required to make? What corrective actions did the principal state that they were going to make? And we do do a follow-up to see if, in fact, that did occur.
What, what kind of timeframe does that happen within? Or is that the next time you have to visit that school for, next time they come up on the list?
So, you know, to be honest with you, you know, we have two hundred and plus schools. We have seven auditors. We try to get to the high schools more frequently, charter schools. But the middle schools and the high schools, sometimes we may not get to them until two to three years.
So...
Ms. Williams, could I add a little bit to that? One of the things with Mr. Doherty coming onboard as Director of Financial Services, I worked with him, was to work with Ms. Winston so that when these things, it'd be part of the process. So, when we see some things related to, for example, school checking accounts and we see the same thing over and over, or as Ms. Winston pointed out, multiple audits, we, I've instructed him to, with his staff, to go out and retrain and reemphasize the importance of managing the books correctly. So, hopefully you'll see an improvement in some of those things going forward.
And I, I'm sorry, and I'll add to that also, that the accounting area, quarterly, they look at, well, triannually now, it was, but Mr. Doherty had indicated his desire to go back to quarterly where we were before. They look at every school's financials quarterly, where they do a complete review of their financial statements and their reconciliations.
So, it's very important for the dollar when we're talking about the financial mistakes. But I'm talking, I'm speaking in terms of just the process and procedures, making sure that we are able to do our checks and balances.
Controls.
Outside of the financial side.
Okay.
If we have a process that a piece of paper goes from one person and it's given to another person, given to another person and it should end up in the file and we find out that, as a result, there is a financial impact. I'm talking about that process that is supposed to prevent that. And so, when we're talking about following the process and procedures and making sure that it doesn't get to a financial impact, that is where the, the other people in our organization's charge sort of comes into play. And I heard you say that you have seven auditors for two hundred and seven schools and all of the things that you monitor. So, I'm just wondering, is, and I'm just trying to think out loud because I think our goal should be is to make sure that everyone is following the process so that we don't have those mistakes.
Sure.
And so, I think as a board, our charge should be to figure out, how do we ensure that the process and procedures are being followed, especially when we're making changes to process and procedures? You know, because new administration comes in and things are done differently with new, new technologies and things like that.
Yes.
So, I think that's something that I think I'm gonna just talk to some of my board colleagues to figure out, come up with a strategy to support you in your process because I, I think it's important that you go out and check.
Sure.
But I would prefer to you to not come with findings. So, if the process and procedures are being followed, this report would be smaller. We would get better and our outcomes will be more positive.
I appreciate that.
So, I'm just thinking this through to try to figure out, how do we do that? And so, I think I'm gonna come to the board, my board colleagues, and see if we can come up with some strategy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do believe, I do believe that this process is getting better. It is getting smaller. It has been larger in, in the past. So, I think that some of the processes that we put in place are working. You know, can we do it better? Yes, we can, but, but it's, it's getting better. And I look forward to, to having that conversation with you to see what we can do to even make it even much more efficient. Mr. Wallace, I always want to give you opportunities since you're over there in Zoom and I don't have the pleasure to see your face or for you to buzz in. So, are you, are you okay or you have any questions?
No questions. I'm good.
Good. Thank you. All right, so now we're gonna move on to two. I'm sorry, you have something?
I wasn't gonna ask, because since I'm curious, so what's the summer schedule like for your auditing office once schools, I mean, imagining the direct hotline complaint slowdown? So, is it giving you an opportunity to breathe and catch up to all of the other audits that are going on? How's that?
Yes, I mean, we, we continue to audit year, year round. We, you know, our Student Activity Fund audits continue. You're correct, there may be a somewhat of a reduction in the need for investigations, but, you know, we, we continue year round and as well as working on some of our operational audits.
I think if we had two point three continuation of work with Panasonic Foundations. Is that, who's taking the, are you? Okay. Dr. Eubanks, are you going to present this for us?
I mean, I would simply say this, that when, when I started on the board five years ago, we paid consultants to do, to do some, and you would correct me if I'm wrong, but usually, at least once a year, but usually not more than that, of board retreats. And when Panasonic joined us, because of the, because of the nature of the Panasonic Foundation and the funding that they had, they gave us, along with about a dozen other districts across the country, some really high-quality, very deep, very engaged intervention that included not only three times, two to three times a year retreats, monthly visits with professionals, Ted Gilkey and Barbara Anderson and George Perry, who visited us and other people had before that. And, and certainly helped the board and helped the administration, pushed us to focus on issues of equity, challenged us on a regular basis about how to conduct board work differently, the whole concept. They helped us to design our committee structure. They helped us to redesign the board work sessions, to put those in the middle. They, they did, they just kind of helped us to examine, always pushing on the relationships, the way we collaborate with the administration and the board and reminding us of our, of what our duties are in that regard. And, and did so, I think, just gave us way more than, you know. I used to always tell them, you know, you're overcharging us. I mean, so we got probably millions of dollars' worth of services from them. So, now that the Panasonic Foundation has moved in a different direction and has changed their funding strategies, the three great consultants have given us a proposal that, that I believe to be extremely reasonable, to kind of continue that support with us, not in a way as near, as intense as it had been in the past because the, the funding is small, but still, to give us an opportunity to do two retreats per year and to do two consulting visits. And I think that, that the work that Barbara, Ted and George have done and will do for us is even while we would be paying for it for the first time in five years, is a bargain compared to the, the quality of service that they provide. How is that for completely off the cuff since you didn't tell me?
So, so colleagues, Ms. Wallace, do you have a copy of this, was this emailed to you?
Sorry, repeat that for me?
Did you get a copy of the consultant service proposal from Panasonic? Do you have this document? Ms. Berkeley?
I'm looking at board, I'm looking on board docs now. I do not see a document loaded up to board doc.
Okay, so, Mrs. Berkeley is forwarding it to you right now. So, colleagues, so, Dr. Eubanks did a great job, is presenting this to us.
Can...
Well, we would consider, or we can make a motion to move this forward to the full board. To recommend this to go to the full board for approval?
Chair Boston, would it kind of make sense for us to just move to another agenda item to give Mr. Wallace a chance to get a copy of this and take a look at it?
Will do. So, the only thing that's left then is the two point four proposal for the FY nineteen Fab Committee Work Plan. So, according to our work plan, we are, this is a work plan for the next school year for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, correct? So, colleagues, you can review this. Did Ms. Wallace get a copy of this as well? Okay.
Ms. Boston, if I may, I would just have a couple edits perhaps.
Sure.
In the month of September, based on some of the discussion we even had when you have Request 2020 Board of Education Recommended Budget Priorities, you may want to add the clarification there from all board committees. Members and committees, if you'd like to add that, so that the board members are well aware when their priorities are due to you as Fab Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Berkeley, did you have that correction?
And then, on the month of February, I would put in there, like we've done in the past several years, that the Fab Committee recommendations will be voted on at that particular meeting for the 2020 requested budget as it comes out of that towards the full board meeting. I think Fab in the past years has actually come out with like the priorities and what they had, so you might want to put something in there about stating that that's one of the items that you'll take under in February as giving Fab's recommendations to the full board on the FY 20 budget.
Okay. I think we...
Because what you have in there, review?
Do we do it in January and then we present in February?
I don't have the date on here. Would, would be your February adoption? Isn't that somewhere in the neighborhood of the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth of February? Because if we did it in, if we did it in January, you wouldn't have had all the public hearings. If I recall from this year, we went through the three public hearings. We heard all of that. As a Fab Committee, you came out with recommendations prior to the full board adoption on February twenty-second. So, I think we did, we had that discussion in February.
Right, and so, we don't have vote on the budget in here, so we should...
Well, this is the Fab Committee's work plan.
Fab Committee.
Fab Committee's work plan.
So, we just need to make sure that our recommendation is forwarded before the budget.
Yeah, and, and based on when that is, I don't have the calendar in front of me. I don't know if you need to alter that date to give you a little bit more time, but... And then, just a clear typo on June, that should be debrief on the twenty budget process, the last bullet there. Welcome. And then, in your note column in the same month, I put some, something in parentheses after that if necessary as we did not need to do it today or will not need to do it in the latter meeting of June. You could always put in there a qualifier that if necessary, that that would be the date that you would adopt. Your reconciled budget.
Okay.
That's the only edits I found.
Because now we know it's a possibility.
Now we know it's a possibility. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Boston, I just had just one edit and that was for the month of September where we have the internal audit, well, for an internal audit planned. And the, usually I'll have a year-end review. As you know, we, we end the year with the March quarterly report, but the June thirtieth is just a summary of the activities for the entire year. Uh, yeah, yeah, the fiscal year, internal audit fiscal year review and, and internal audit work plan.
Do you have that, Mrs. Berkeley? You get that language?
Yes, it's usually a combined document.
Turn your mic, is your mic on?
No. So, you all just voted on the calendar for next year and it looks like the meeting that Mr. Pfister was speaking of will be February twenty-first, so...
The other thing, holding that Fab meeting on the twelfth is more than sufficient time.
Okay. So, just add that bullet. Okay, got you.
Thank you.
Any other colleagues have, have any additions or corrections to the work plan?
I do not.
Mr. Wallace? Okay. Yes?
I don't know if we want to add to the, because we, we already have a full meeting, but do we want to add to the Fab Committee just a... But do we want to add to the Fab Committee just a where do we stand period, you know, with our, on the finances? You know, as we begin to trend, we can show trends in where we are midway through the year. Maybe we do a mid-year review or something with, with finance, just to see where we stand compared to the budget. Cause this, this operating budget.
Yeah, yeah, we do that, I think, some, but we should put that in the plan.
December?
We should put that in the plan, yeah, that's good.
But that would be um, December, I think it would be later in the year, not during the budget season.
I would recommend at least January, if you wanted to do a mid-year review. Cause um, majority of our expenditures don't start accumulating until September, when the teachers come back, to give us a little bit better handle.
Exactly.
Um, so.
Or do we want to do it?
Even, even, even February would be a good time to do it because by the time some payroll things hit, and by the time we do our end of the year, end of the month close, the February, if you have time on your agenda, February would be sort of like a mid-year review. But keep in mind, I'm sorry, we're gonna be working towards the, the monthly financial report that we've talked about. So the board would see that um probably on a monthly basis to give you a heads up and then use that as a basis for conversations maybe in March, so it wouldn't be as in-depth as needed.
So, John, my, my question was, eve- even though February might be better in terms of having more budget information, is it worse because we're, we would be so deeply into next year's budget process?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, either month is gonna be tough, I mean, you get a little more data for February, um, but you, you're right, you're in, right in the middle of the budget. So the compromise would probably be the January meeting.
But I'm, I'm not looking at it as a tool for this year's to be able to set trends, to be able to see where we are, you know, in coming years. It's not as a, a tool for us to use to make budget decisions in that year, it's a tool to help us support.
Right, I understand that.
So even if it were. Yeah.
January would be better, just to give you a.
Mid double review.
Mid-year budget review.
Mid-year financial review.
Yes. And, and if you schedule it for January and for some reason needs to be pushed to February, you always have that option.
Good.
Putting it in February, you'd have to push it to March, you certainly can't back it up, but you can certainly push it forward.
All right, thank you.
Good addition. Okay. Mr. Wallace, are you there? Are you still with us? Okay, so any other questions?
Yeah, I'm here.
You have any, you have any corrections to the uh, the draft work plan for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
No, I just, I want to uh thank John for his comment. I know there was a lot of discussion earlier about, you know, popping timelines and processes and, you know. Um, um, hopefully that that can be in writing, so folks, you know, can be held accountable for getting their comments in timely, so they can have proper discussion and debate.
Okay, so seeing that we don't have any other changes or corrections, um, I'm gonna open it up for somebody to make a motion to approve this, so we can move this through.
Move to approve.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, passed. Okay, so Mr. Wallace, hopefully you've had time to scan over the um, the two point three, which is continuation of work for Panasonic. You have any correct, uh, I'm sorry, questions or? Comment?
I, I haven't seen the document, so I'll just have staying from voting, I'm not gonna hold up the meeting.
Okay, but you'll always have an opportunity to have that conversation at the, uh, when we present it at the board meeting. Mm-hmm, recommendation.
Okay.
I move that we um send this to the entire board for review.
Okay, that's right, yeah, that's it.
With our, with our recommendation for approval?
With our recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we have one abstention, Mr. Wallace.
Abstain.
Abstain, I'm sorry.
You said it right.
That's what I said, right? Okay. All right. Okay, so, next step, we have three point one, which is new business. I think we have any new business. Well, done for this almost school year. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
You wanna, you wanna do comments?
I'm gonna do comments after, after we adjourn, so as soon as we adjourn, we will have public comment.
Before I then make a motion, and so if this is, is this John's final meeting?
This is John's final meeting with a.
John, just uh, thank, thank you for your brilliant work.
It's been a pleasure, sir, and to everyone on the board.
And uh, you know, I know, and enjoy that long commute that you're gonna have.
Yeah, twelve, twelve minutes.
You won't, you, they won't, they won't be anywhere near as fun as we are, I must tell you.
I was coming over today, as a matter of fact, and there was, and there was a crash on Route fifty and, you know, I'm going right past it, heading, heading this direction. I'm going, I don't have to deal with those Route fifty crashes anymore, so.
Yeah, that's blood.
But I appreciate all the time, the support the board's giving me and, and, and uh wish you well in the future when it comes to these type of endeavors and, and, and of course, and everything, so really do appreciate it.
But we have you on speed dial.
You have me on speed dial, Ms. Boston, absolutely you do.
And we can call you regardless of how far away you are, we can definitely get in touch with you, so I appreciate everything.
I'm only forty-five minutes away if you need me.
And I just want to say I really appreciate your help from the very beginning.
Thank you.
Um, helping me to understand fun balance and putting the fun in fun balance, I really appreciate that.
Okay, so I'm gonna quiz you now.
Mm-hmm.
What do you use fun balance for?
A one-time expense.
One-time, 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 yes ma'am.
And so I just appreciate it, we had, we've had a lot of fun and we didn't agree on everything, but we worked through it and that's what's important, so I appreciate your work.
When I first started the, the budget work, just to kind of a little bit of aside, uh, one of my mentors and, and at that time supervisor said, you know, we can find money for just about anything, we just can't find money for everything. And, you know, proven point in the discussions we had tonight, you know, we put thirty-nine million dollars for compensation. Would we have loved to put eighty or a hundred and twenty? Absolutely, but that's a zero-sum game, so some winners, some losers. But in all in all, I think what you've um passed and will go forward with is a, is an equitable budget that will do uh great things for the children of Prince George's County. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, you have any final words before we adjourn? Okay. Motion second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. One person who signed up to speak, I believe that's Mrs. Ms. Dudley.
I'll say that again. Um, I'm not sure I understand the protocol and procedure for having people to call in and sign up to speak and then have the meeting adjourned. And I guess my question would be, would this be a part of the official minutes of the meeting? But it wouldn't if the meeting was adjourned according to parliamentary procedure.
Well, we can open the meeting back up and allow your minutes to be part of that. Your comments?
I agree, I, I agree with that. I mean, this is the procedures, the way we've been doing it, we, the intent is not to kind of stop it from being part of the public record, so we should do that.
So I, I appreciate, I appreciate, so you need to move to reopen the meeting back up?
Yes, we, they did, they, we did.
Yes, approved.
So thank you.
Okay.
So I just need to make sure before you start that out, our sound people over there are ready. You ready? Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, and for the record, I'm the President of Prince George's County Educators Association. And I am here today because our members are beyond furious at the way negotiations were handled this year and the intent, um, they feel to be disingenuous about the amount of funds that would be available for staff when secret pay raises were given to cabinet members and uh our members still lament three steps behind. Um, we have the documentation, um, and the data that would indicate that since two thousand and seven, we have languished well behind surrounding jurisdictions and that our educators are leaving us in droves. Data was requested as to how many stu- educators actually left Prince George's County. And we were told over and again, it wasn't fifteen percent. Well, we pulled the data from our database as we um go back and forth with payroll every, every month, every two weeks, and it was actually fourteen point four percent, which by my math eats the heck out of fifteen percent. But the point is, is that we are losing educators in droves because we are not keeping step with surrounding jurisdictions. And my fear as President of Prince George's County Educators Association is that we're going to continue to lose our veteran teachers who have been in the system for ten to fifteen years because they can go to greener pastures and make fifteen to twenty five, twenty-two thousand dollars a year more. And when I hear that there's no money, I don't think that there's a, there's no money, I think that there's no will to make sure that our educators are well compensated. And it's not just a matter of money for teachers in their pockets. Because Lord knows if we wanted to be rich like Beyonce and Jay-Z and put a ring on it, we would be doing that. We're here because we love the children, and because we love the children, we want to make sure that they have people in front of them that want to be there, that aren't worried about whether or not they're gonna be able to pay their mortgage or pay their car payments. I heard earlier that there was um, there was money in the budget for negotiations. We've been negotiating with the, with um labor backwards. This, the, the, the setup here is we, we pass the budget and then whatever's left over, you give to employees. Well, this year, we did things a little bit differently, we did a two-year budget, so there's money in the budget for one step for next year, but that we were told during negotiations that there was no additional revenue for enhancements for steps for educators, to get, get people caught up. And we've got to negotiate differently. As a board, you have to take control of what the CEO is doing, and that's within your power. When you sit as, as a board as a whole, you have the authority to override the CEO, and you have not done that. And I request again that you ask the CEO to reopen our negotiations with a salary re-opener so that we can have real conversations about some sort of immediate compensation for our employees. Because I am fearful that we're, on June the fifth, July the fifteenth, we're gonna have a massive exodus of teachers out of Prince George's County. And I wouldn't blame them if they were twenty thousand dollars a year behind and they could leave. I just want to say one last thing. You talked about the budget calendar this year and how, and, and how to stagger things out. We want to request that we do some negotiations a little differently this year, that we start early, that we get our negotiations out of the way before the budget goes to the CEO. And that we have an agreement that we're gonna make these steps real for our members and put it in the budget and let whoever the next county executive is, tell the people no. Let the next county executive tell the educators that they don't mean anything. We've already seen that our past county executive will lie to us. Let's put people on record as lying to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Okay, so now may I have a motion to adjourn?
Does that move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.